Good evening, welcome to the Brockton School Committee Superintendent's Contract Subcommittee Meeting. Today is Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, 6:00 PM. We are located at the George Rahm Little Theater here at Brockton High School, 470 First Ave., Brockton, Mass. Before we start, I will call this meeting to order by establishing a quorum. Mrs. Sullivan? Mr. Gomes?
Here.
Mr. Vega?
Here.
Ms. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah.
Superintendent Tiliani in present and myself, Tony Rodriguez as the Vice Chair in present. In addition to attending, the public can view this meeting via television on Comcast Channel 8 and 107.1 HD version and online via this link, www.youtube.com/thebrocktonchannels. Today is the approval of the Superintendent's presentation on our focus indicators and goals. This is one of our functions as school committee members of evaluating and monitoring the superintendent on the goals and policies set by the Brockton School Committee to see our progress of where we're moving forward. With that being said, I will hand the floor over to our wonderful Superintendent, Dr. Tiliani.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me an opportunity to present to you what I believe could be my goals and indicators, but this is a discussion, not necessarily, you know, it doesn't have to be one-sided. So if you have thoughts, this is certainly the time to indicate them and this can be a free-flowing discussion. But I just wanted to start off by talking a little bit about the evaluation cycle, just for those who are at home and might be watching. So the way this will go is it's going to follow five steps. The first step is that the school committee approves goals and focus indicators for the superintendent. So that's what we're going to be talking about tonight. The second step is that I'll then provide you a self-assessment that includes evidence, artifacts, and rationales that show you how I think I did on demonstrating progress towards my goals and how I think I did on my focus indicators. Then each individual school committee member completes their own evaluation rubric. The superintendent evaluation subcommittee here compiles a composite evaluation and then the school committee approves the final evaluation and overall rating. Now, this process generally takes place over the course of a full school year. So in the future, I would be presenting these in September and then you would have an opportunity to approve them. And then throughout the year, I would give you a progress report. So there would be a formative evaluation in the middle of the year where you could give me feedback, let me know how I'm doing, what you need to see happen before the end of the school year. And then at the end of the school year around May is when you would do my summative evaluation. But we're doing this on a slightly, you know, shorter timeline because of the way I sort of entered into the district as the interim and so on. So again, just to give some context, there is always three goals in a superintendent evaluation. There should be one that is based on district improvement, one that's focused on professional practice, and then another that is focused on student learning. So those are the three goals and then also you're focusing on focus indicators. And those focus indicators fall under four different standards that I'm going to go over in the next slide. But just so you can see here, this is standard one, instructional leadership. There are two focus indicators on this one, curriculum and instruction. And then, or curriculum and/or instruction. And then you rate me based on the four different levels. So unsatisfactory, needs improvement, proficient, and exemplary. And in the rubric, it explains what I need to demonstrate in order to achieve one of those levels. So here on the right-hand side, you'll see all four standards and then all of the focus indicators. And these are provided by DESI and the school committee. I know many of you have already been trained by MAS C on how to do the evaluation. But just so you know, there are several different focus indicators, but there's four standards that they fall under. Standard one is instructional leadership. Standard two is management and operations. Standard three is family and community engagement. And standard four is professional culture. Now ideally, every year superintendent should pick six to eight to focus on. And that is where we choose together which ones we want to focus on that year. So under standard one, instructional leadership, there's curriculum, instruction, assessment, and data-informed decision-making, evaluation, and student learning. Under standard two, which is management and operations, there's environment, human resources management and development, scheduling and management information systems, law, ethics, and policies, and fiscal systems. Standard three, family and community engagement, is communication, engagement, sharing responsibility, and family concerns. And then under standard four, for professional culture, there are four focus indicators. One, which is shared vision and commitment to high standards. Two, communications. Three, continuous learning. And four, managing conflict. And under each of those indicators, you see what they are, what each of those focus indicators, you see the descriptors. So it tells you what each of those entail. So again, you start with the standards, the four standards, then you have focus indicators and then you have descriptors under those. So for example, under standard two, management and operations, environment is one of the focus indicators, but there are three descriptors of that. There's school culture and climate, operational systems and routines, and student well-being. So these are the, all the different aspects that of course superintendent should be focusing on all of them. But for the purposes of evaluation, it's always best to focus on six to eight. So right now, here are the three goals on this slide that I am suggesting. So district improvement goal number one. And again, I, when I was thinking about what my goals should be, I was trying to focus on too sort of what the charge was when I came in as the interim superintendent. There were certainly things that the school committee was very clear I needed to focus on. And so I kept those in mind as I was creating my goals. So district improvement goal would be to recalibrate operational and organizational systems to increase transparency, streamline processes, and enhance efficiencies. And this goes across multiple different areas, you know, goes through human resources, transportation, fiscal systems, et cetera. The professional practice goal that I'm suggesting is to implement the findings of the district's many audits, reviews, and investigations to improve systems and to ensure greater compliance. So that's something I know you've noticed I do already is I've been referring back as somebody new into the district. You have had a lot of audits, investigations, reviews. And I think it's most important for me to be looking at those and using those as we figure out what our improvement plan is moving forward. So that has been what I've been using as a guidepost and I suggest that to be also how you evaluate me is on my progress in using those audits, reviews, and investigations to improve the district. And then the student learning goal number three is to establish and enact alternative measures, alternative measures to determine competency for students in the class of 2025 as well as students from prior classes and obviously beyond as well. Because that is another main focus this year that we didn't know was going to be a focus when I came in, but it's certainly an area of focus for the district. I think it not only impacts the class of 2025, but it impacts our prior classes and it's something we need to be thoughtful about for class of 2026 into the future. So those are my suggestions for my three goals, my district improvement, professional practice, and student learning goal. And then these are my suggestions for the focus indicators that I would choose. So I'm suggesting standard one A, which is curriculum. Standard two A, which is management, operations, and environment. Standard two B, which is human resources management. Standard two E, which is HR fiscal systems. Standard three A, family and community engagement. And standard four C, communications. And so now I'm going to go through each one of those individually. So here on these slides, you see, I know it's a lot of little writing, but you will have this as well. Standard one A is curriculum. And here you'll see all of the different areas. So what it looks like, what's the rubric for needs improvement, proficient, exemplary. But also we've included a column there that includes the strategic objective. Now this is the strategic plan that I mentioned when we were talking about the budget investment plan. So this is the strategic plan that preceded me. It's the one that is on the website that has already been, the one that got community input, that's been posted and translated. And I do believe in continuing that strategic plan through the five years as, and then starting a new plan. So here you'll see that I've also aligned the focus indicator that I'm choosing with our strategic objective. So the first one, curriculum, also aligns with the strategic objective number one for Brockton Public Schools, which is high-quality learning experiences. And then what you see on the last column, so the other rows are the, just the pat language from the rubric. But in that fourth column, you'll see what I'm proposing to be the action steps. So for curriculum, the first would be the adoption of the ELA for grades nine through 12 curriculum that we're in the process of doing now. District-wide implementation of Wonders Curricula. Tailored professional development and staff coaching to effectively implement the curriculum and structure lessons. And then posted school-based positions that ensure appropriate common planning time because that is a huge area of focus for DESI to, in order to ensure that we are appropriately implementing this new curriculum. So that's the first indicator that I'm suggesting. The second one is on environment. This aligns with the strategic objective number five, which is about equitable resources. The four steps here are number one, assessing fiscal practices and systems at the transportation department and to make short-term changes. Two, streamline and automate the bid process for private vendor transportation. Three, creating processes to ensure fiscal efficiencies such as the personnel change form and the additional compensation request form. And four, engage in weekly enrollment and projections meetings to plan for effective staffing and use of space for SY26. The next indicator would be standard two B, which is human resources management and development. That aligns with strategic objective three, which is creating welcoming and inclusive environments. And four of the action steps that I'm proposing are restructuring the human resources department to better meet the operational needs of the district. Accounting and automating position control and munis. Streamlining and recalibrating responsibilities from the human resources department. Negotiating and updating collective bargaining agreements. The next one is fiscal systems. And so that is standard or focus indicator two E. That aligns with strategic objective five as well, which is equitable resources. And the four action steps that I'm proposing for that are to create and launch a budget dashboard that presents costs incurred and incurred in real time. Engage in budget collaborative meetings with department heads and administrators to review next year's budget expenditure requests. Communicate budget updates consistently with the community such as posting the school budget and redesigning the finance office and delineating roles and responsibilities. And then the last two indicators would be standard three A, sorry, focus indicator three A, engagement. That aligns to strategic objective four, which is family and community engagement. And the proposed action steps would be to distribute and communicate consistent updates to the school community via newsletters, the website, the new website, social media, and presentations. Two, to actively participate in the district parent advisory council meetings. Three, to build and sustain relationships with city and community leaders to support the entire school community. And four, host community forums as part of the first hundred days of the superintendent's entry plan. And then the last indicator is four C, which is communications. This aligns with strategic objective four, which is family and community engagement. And the four action steps there are regular submission of superintendent memoranda to school, the school committee. Two, to distribute and communicate consistent updates to the school community via newsletters, the website, social media, and presentations. Three, to launch the new website that provides additional capacities and is ADA compliant. And four, facilitate monthly principal meetings to disseminate pertinent information and updates. Now these are just some of the proposed action steps that we've been thinking about. There are many others that would come up when I complete my self-assessment. But I wanted you to just see sort of why I was choosing the indicators that I was, sort of how I'm thinking about this work and how I've already thought about this work. Because I wanted this evaluation, even though we're starting it in March, to still reflect the work that has been done over the course of this school year. So you'll hear some of the things that we've already done or I've already been doing because again, these are the things that I was tasked with as soon as I came in by the school committee. Oh, did not mean to go back that far, sorry about that. So again, these are the goals and indicators and you could truly choose any single one of these. I'm just proposing these six, which I just went over. But you could certainly choose others if there were others that spoke to you more greatly. But again, my reasoning in choosing them and the steps that I outlined were about what I believed were sort of the priorities that I needed to take on this school year. My hope is that next school year, you're going to see a lot more instruction on here because all of our operations and our fiscal management will be in much better shape. I think it was Counselor Farwell yesterday who mentioned like, oh, you know, superintendents, they do curriculum, they do instruction, and I've had to have my focus elsewhere. But I think that is important because we do need to get these systems, these foundational systems in order before we move forward. That's what I have for you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you Superintendent for that presentation. And so just to touch base before I take any questions. So as you see, like, you know, the jobs, you know, our responsibility of supervising the superintendent. Just to point out, so when you, when we receive our weekly updates, you can see the superintendent's snapshot. So that's one of the mechanisms that we use to monitor the superintendent. As you can see, like last week, you know, she was meeting with DPAC, visit to North for the 500 Club. So those are the, those are your evidence base that you're getting of what the superintendent is doing on a daily basis as, you know, the committee is working to monitor. I'm not sure if anybody has actually visited DESI's webpage and you can see what the, you know, we all took charting courses and, you know, we've already all been through that of how we evaluate the superintendent. So, but it's up to this committee to give direction and see how we want those, how we actually, you know, evaluate the superintendent moving forward. So, but with that, I will go to Mr. Sullivan, followed by Ms. Oliver.
Thank you for the presentation. Do you have that in printed form? The reason I'm not, because it was real hard to look at.
It was really small, I'm sorry, and I realized that.
I thought my eyes were getting.
No, no, it was, it was small and I don't have it for you in printed form, but I will get it to you in printed form. So you don't feel that you need to vote on it tonight if, since you don't have it in printed form? And I apologize for that.
Just one other question. The, you had mentioned something about the HR department restructure. What do you, what do you mean by that?
So that, so that actually ties in with the implementing, the recommendations of the audit. So you all had had an audit done previously that was specific to your HR department during your, one of the former superintendents. And so that was, and it was done in 2024, I believe, was finished just last year.
Actually, it was 2023.
Okay. So I have that as well and that is one of the, one of the audits that I've been utilizing moving forward. So one of the findings, and I will certainly be presenting it at, when I present the budget, is how we are streamlining our HR department. So right now, we do have a very robust HR department. So if you look at our HR department in comparison to our finance office, for example, so we have an assistant superintendent, four associate directors, and six administrative assistants in the HR department alone. So it is one of our larger departments, which makes sense. I mean, we do have a large district, we have 3,000 employees. However, in the audit, it shows comparable-sized districts and what their HR departments, how they're structured, how many positions they have, and how much they cost. I know that this is something that has been mentioned not only here, it is something that I know that the city council talked about also at the last year's budget hearing that I watched before I came in. It seemed to be an area of concern, which is why coming in, I thought it was important to use that as one of the audits. So I'll be presenting to you all a phased restructure. So I wouldn't attempt to do it all in one go because we do want to make sure that we retain internal capacity and institutional knowledge. But there are steps that we're going to be taking that I'll present also as part of my evaluation and the budget to, to follow up on the recommendations from that audit.
Just as a little bit of a follow-up, I know the city councils were talking about combining the city HR to the school committee, the school department's HR. Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm just talking about even restructuring within just the, the school department.
What do you mean, cutting people?
Um, I will, I'll present what I'm thinking about. That's part of what I'm saying we're going to do. I'll present my, sort of my idea of it. We're still working on it and I'm actually working on it in collaboration with the HR department.
Just as a final statement, it just seems a little odd, like this year we have 7.2 million over, next year we've got 7.8, and you want to cut people? It just seems odd to me.
No, restructure. So for example, if we have, so one of the suggestions was to have folks in the HR department with greater expertise in HR. So that's their experience, their background. They may have, you know, degrees in it or, you know, so I think that was, has been something that's been mentioned before. What are the certifications and the qualifications of folks in the HR department? So it really is just, there are people in that department who are union members, who are tenured. And so they would be fine, but there would be some restructuring where we create a department that does have less people with more expertise. So it's not necessarily about, I, I think again, it's to, and I can have them, I believe they came and presented to this group.
So just to, just to refresh, back in, I believe it was May, if I'm not mistaken, the firm that conducted the audit came before this committee and gave a presentation of their findings of how a whole HR department and what the recommendations are to, to fix. It's not something that can happen overnight as the superintendent states. It's going to be a phased approach to make sure that it's sustained the right way. But it's up to this committee, but I don't think we would, I wouldn't suggest to have that again in, you know, in a public forum. But if we want to get a refresher on it, I'm pretty sure that we can bring back the firm and just to refresh everybody's memory of what the findings are of that audit. But the audit was done 18 months prior to it even being presented to us.
And I do have not only the report, but I also have the presentation that was given. And that, the presentation really distills it down. It shows sort of how much we're spending on our HR department, which is $1.3 million versus what districts that are similar size to us are spending, which is significantly less. So to your point, yes, we have money to carry over, but it's important that we're thinking about our resources differently moving forward and how we can utilize them and leverage them better so that we're providing more support to students.
I guess this would be a final, there is union workers in the department.
And that would all be addressed.
I for one, do not want to see anybody cut. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver?
Good evening.
Sullivan.
Just to start off, I do agree with the proposal that you have set forward for your evaluation moving forward. Not only are you basically picking few, but you're also in the middle of working all those different areas, making sure everything function and is moving, you know, as easily, but also moving to the pace that we want it to move and basically taking care of certain things that has been left undone, that needed to be revamped and redone. I do appreciate you being there at city councils yesterday and the presentation was awesome. I can just basically see, just looking around, everybody left everybody speechless. That is one of the reasons that I appreciate all the work you've been doing and will continue to do. Just the fact that you're able to put a presentation and basically reinvent the whole transportation department that was in such a mess, right? And everybody came here to do something with that transportation. We, we know it's a mess and we know we need to take accountability for what's been happening before. And the fact that you're not standing by and allowing others to do the work, you're doing the work with others around you as a team. And that's one thing I do appreciate that I noticed that you bring everybody to the table and try to figure out how we can work together as a team to move it. So that's one thing that I do appreciate and I do notice that it's a collaborative approach and it's not always just you, you're doing it. And I think your team also appreciates that you're also in there, working with them, getting stuff done. So I do appreciate it and I do approve what you've just proposed for your evaluation moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. Okay, so just one point on the superintendent's evaluation. It's a very detailed evaluation for school committee members. So we have three new members and I just want to make sure that they understand the process because there's a lot more paperwork that goes with this. And Madam Superintendent, thank you for, because that was a great presentation that you presented to us on what you think the district needs. But yeah, charting the course doesn't really cover that full evaluation of the superintendent. There's other paperwork that I think would be helpful to the new members.
Yep.
Because we always got like all that paperwork with it before we did it so we could look it over. But I mean, your presentation was great, just that stuff for the new members. And I think the RSM report is the one that has the HR on it.
Uh, HR is totally, the RSM was.
Was that the audit that, oh, we had an HR audit.
We had an HR audit and there was a RSM, there was the 2020 district review.
Which one was it brought up on?
But Ms. Sullivan is correct though, that even in the RSM one, they also bring up human resources. And in the Nystrom, Beckman, and Paris one, they also bring up restructuring.
Okay, so maybe we can just, like, the committee can just review those parts.
Absolutely.
And then we'll be updated on what those said, because it was a little while ago that we read it. But our HR department, I know, is unique compared to other districts. And I mean, as long as I've been on the committee, which is going to be 12 years at the end of this year, it's been currently the setup that we use. And, and our HR people have a lot of knowledge because they work on all these, they help us with all these negotiation contracts, which are really important business that happens. So we'd be looking at like how we're gonna, going to like look at the contracts after this if we don't have those people. I mean, they do a great job, they, they schedule everything, they, you know, update us, they take care of all the details of the negotiation contracts. So with the committee, we'd have to look at that and see how we're going to deal with that for the future. And the evidence that Mr. Rodriguez said about the snapshot, there's more evidence than.
Yeah, 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 that was just, just one example.
That was one thing that shows what she does during the week. But in the, in the past, the committee has had, like, the superintendent brought in some evidence of curriculum, family engage, all those family engagement goals and things like that. She might have brought in evidence or he might have brought in evidence. Or we could go to the office and look at it, which would be easier than carrying it here.
So my, my first eval, my last district, I had a binder that everybody was given with like dividers that had artifacts for each of the indicators. By the time the second eval came, I like had a book that I think I brought to the superintendent's search committee in my first interview. It was a little dense. I will streamline that, I will not make it as long. I want to make sure it's digestible and something that everybody can really, you know, it won't take you two weeks to get through. So yes, I would agree with that. I will make sure that you are provided a binder at minimum that includes artifacts and evidence that demonstrates progress towards the different goals.
Yeah, thank you. That'd be great. Thank you.
Mr. Gomes?
Thank you. Thank you, Judy. I will take those paperwork and review those for the review of the superintendent. But I must give you credit. You've done tremendous amount of work from the time that you, you came in. And I love the presentation, I appreciate all the focus areas, all the action steps that need to be taken. I am particularly interested in the curriculum section and the students' well-being. Just sharing my piece of, my side of information. piece of my side of information, especially when it comes to mental health. Our students are dealing with a loss, especially right now, and not just the students, but also the staff. If we could put some extra focus in that area, that would be greatly appreciated. Anna and I have had discussions regarding this as well. I love the new materials that we've approved in our past meeting for the teaching curriculum through lenses, so and so. I'm very excited about that. And I, I've moved to, you know, if we can find any other high quality materials for the staff and the students, that would be amazing. The other thing too, I think it's worth mentioning, we have amazing individuals with amazing skills working for our district. And it is important that we analyze their areas of expertise to make sure we put them where they will succeed, or at least provide them with the resources that they need to succeed. Based on the audit, investigation, HR audit, so on and so forth, we do need to do a restructuring of our offices, all these offices that are providing support that we need. Now, everybody has the appropriate skill set or expertise where they're currently located. And that's, that's for a fact. So definitely need to do some work there as well. I was going to share this. I'll share this later on during the new business. But I'll leave it there. So I think you've done an amazing, oh, the other thing I wanted to say. I mean, we, some of us are new to the committee. I haven't seen the extent to which the school department and the city have worked together collaboratively. And I've been seeing that on this end. The presentations you've been doing in front of the city council, the behind the scene communications you've had, those folks on the city side, even today during our subcommittee, bid review subcommittee, Ken was giving credit to some of the folks on the city side that have been essential to make sure some of our projects, some of our work gets done. And that's truly appreciated. So I appreciate the, the work that you're doing with them and some of the things that we, as committee members, don't even know about. So I hope that we'll continue moving forward, that we have a smooth, you know, a streamed, streamlined process for us. But yeah, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes.
Could I, if I could mention too, and I can also send around to the paperwork there, MASC has presentations and guidebooks on the evaluation process that refer to the, that kind of, I mean, Desi has a huge guidebook on superintendent evaluation, but I think the way MASC has done it is for school committee members. So that I looked at the guidebook today, just to kind of remind myself where they want school committee members to focus. So I can send you that presentation and that guidebook, but they have it on their website. But it's really helpful and includes all of the different rubrics and paperwork. I think also to your point about social emotional learning and just curriculum and instruction, I do want to note that while these are the areas that I'm focusing on or proposing to focus on, that there is amazing work, as you've seen throughout the, the year that I've been here, that I've gotten to see as well, happening throughout the district in these areas. So I don't want you to think that we're not focusing on them at all, but we have wonderful professionals in this district that are keeping their eyes on those specific things, whereas I admit that my focus is on some of these more operational and fiscal. But the, as you see, the curriculum and instruction work is moving. We have a Selwell department where we haven't had before, and they've been doing incredible work, not only with curriculum, but with crisis management and supporting students in the wake of, you know, instances that have happened this year. So I do just want to give an immense amount of credit to the entire team that is continuing to, you know, keep the, this machine running while, you know, myself and some other team members are trying to focus on some of these foundational aspects.
Thank you.
Mr. Vega. I thought I already called your name. Hold on, I didn't call his name, Mr. Vega.
Just to echo something that Ms. Oliver said, you know, it, we, you know, doing this in the middle of the year, as you noted too, it's a little bit out of the ordinary, right? You know, in ideal world, you would have presented in September, we would, we'd be closing evaluations in May. But what is really exciting to see is that, hey, this presentation to today, looking at those standards that you, we'd be using for evaluation, and the action steps that we'd use as criteria on, on the success, the majority of them were either done or well on their way, which is exactly where, you know, so if we have started on time, this is where we want to be. So that's fantastic, you know. It's also, like, I've been a part of evaluations for executive directors and heads of school, and I've never seen such a clean delineation in connection to strategic plans, DESI standards, school committee mandates, and then, as you said, the reports and audits that you narrated when you walked in the door. So that's very exciting. I think speaks volumes to how you approach the work. Questions? You mentioned incorporating the recommendations from the HR audit and, you know, the city side investigation. I didn't hear any mention of the security audit. Is that something that?
Yes, the security audit. And another one I didn't mention, you guys have a lot, or we have a lot, is the DESI MOU. That's a huge one, too. So yeah, there have been a number of different, we also have a tiered focus monitoring review. We have many different guidance documents that have been kind of informing the work moving in. But I mean, I think that those things are really tremendous to somebody like me coming in new, is to be able to have folks who already did all of this deep dive into the work and then are kind of laying out here are what we believe to be the areas you need to focus on, and here are the recommendations. In some way, that, that is kind of a gift to a new leader coming in. As overwhelming as all of them are, they have a lot of overlap. And again, they kind of, they kind of map out what needs to happen in the district in a way that's made it actually easier to walk into the, the district.
Right. And, you know, what's exciting about hearing that, too, is that the superintendent evaluation is far more than evaluation of the superintendent. It's really, it's kind of a, here's the state of our district, you know. Here are the reports that we've been, you know, here are the things that, the recommendations that have been made, and here's our progress on them. So last question is, you know, obviously, the school committee provides feedback. Are there, is there any opportunities within this process for members of your leadership team to, to share their thoughts and experiences?
That's a great question. So part of the, there was, as part of my new superintendent induction program, they used to do a 360 inter, like a 360 survey. So it would get sent out to all of my, my leadership team at the, at central offices and all principals and assistant principals. So it's interesting that you mention that, because I've actually never done this process without that, that program running and them kind of doing it for me. So I think that's a really great question, and I'll have to think on what that should look like. And I'll, I'll actually reach out to MAS S2 and see if they have suggestions for how you kind of keep that feedback loop going even after new superintendent induction program is, you've graduated, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Y'all said? No, that's, that's a great point. So this is one of the, this is why we, we have this. It's what we want, you know, what we want presented, what, you know, you want evaluations. So this is the process. This is the meaning that, you know, this is what we want in order to, you know, properly evaluate the superintendent. One of the other, one of the other, I mean, this is obviously my first one. We didn't do the last two, obviously. We have some, is, you know, we did have some discussion, because primarily what ends up happening once all the members do the evaluation, it goes to the vice chair, and the vice chair takes it and compiles everything together and then puts a presentation and brings it back to the, to the full committee. I don't want, I'm not saying I don't want that responsibility, but I think it should be a team effort. I think it should be a subcommittee of at least three members of the school committee to actually take all of that together. Because if you just leave it up to one person, you can miss something or some, some of these comments are not put in to that. But I think if we have a subcommittee of evaluating the superintendent, they can sit together and say, this is what the presentation looks like. Everybody has their input. So, you know, moving forward. So I hope that everybody agrees with me on that, so we can tackle that. You know, whoever wants to be on that, we can take a vote on our next school committee and can forward to me whoever's interested on that, and we can move forward. So that's one of the processes that I want to see changed, not just leaving it up to one person. It should be a, a team effort. So, Mr. Sullivan?
Yes. Pre, you had mentioned going to send out copies?
Yes.
Can I request hard copies?
Yes, absolutely. We can send them out.
It's much easier to read.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do hard copies.
Thank you. Any other follow up questions? Well, I mean, it seems that like everybody's in agreement with the superintendent already presented, you know, focus indicators and goals. I mean, she does a very, very wonderful job with her presentations, and we seen that last night. So with that being said, we can actually not take a vote tonight, and we can take it up next school committee meeting. And any information of what you want presented could be forwarded to the superintendent, myself, and the chair, what your asks are, and we can get that all compiled and start the process. And hopefully, by June, we can convene and do that presentation and show where we are. Thank you. Any further comments?
Do you need a motion to move it?
No, we don't need to take it yet. So we're going to take that. So, Mr. Sullivan?
Oh, I just had one question on the DESI MOU. So that is in response to the district review, right?
Yes, that's exactly right.
Which areas that we had to improve on when they came to review us for the district review?
That's exactly right. So they, they had the original MOU in 2020, and then they did an addendum in 2024.
Okay.
And that is the one that included the security audit that they paid for.
I think, I think we were sent that. I believe we have that.
Yes. So we talked about it in executive session.
Yeah, I remember reading that.
Right. But the, yes, the DESI MOU had 15, has 15 different areas on it that include everything from graduation rates, more equity and access for students who are on IEPs and English learners, to the safety, security audit, also brought up human resources, actually, because they had, and brought up the fiscal systems, because I believe they had also done a financial audit at some point, too. They had done a, a review of the finances before. But now, I mean, we have significant ones ourselves now, so we don't need theirs. But, but yeah, so that included those 15 different areas. So I provided a presentation, I know it was a while ago, I think it was in October, I presented the safety audit, which was item number 15 of the MOU. And then in November, because Desi required that I provide you all an update on where we were with the whole MOU. So I provided a presentation that had all of the different 15 areas and where we were on all of them in demonstrating progress. And at this point, Desi, they actually, I don't know if I'm allowed to say this publicly, but I'm going to, is that they believe that we have demonstrated so much progress towards our MOU that they are considering sunsetting it.
Considering what?
Sunsetting it. So saying, you guys got this, and saying that they no longer have to check on it. So what we have done is we have had to write a letter of commitment to them, saying, okay, we commit to doing all of these things on each of the different 15 areas. So we're committed to continuing this. We're committing to, you know, it's almost like we're writing an MOU for ourselves, saying that this is what we're going to do, and kind of a strategic plan that responds to their MOU. And they're reviewing that right now. And then they will write a letter of commitment to us, saying, okay, we commit to support you, but we can now like let you guys, you know, go.
You'll let us know if that.
I'll let you know. I'm waiting. I know that they have some, I thought I was going to have it already. I think Desi's going through some stuff right now, and so that's why we haven't gotten it, and I haven't wanted to bother them. But the last I met with them, we were in, in good shape, and they were happy with our letter of commitment. So when that comes, I will present it.
Thank you.
Well, if, any other comments? But if, if anybody is, if everybody's on board with what the superintendent, we don't have to wait. That was my mistake on actually taking a vote. We can actually take it tonight, and then we refer to the full committee and take that up for final votes.
Put the motion in. The motion approval of superintendent's presented focus indicators and goals.
Second. Motion was made by Mrs. Oliver, properly seconded by Mr. Gomes. A show of hands. It is unanimous. It passes. Thank you. Do we have any other business to discuss? The only other thing is, we'll bring that to the full committee of creating a subcommittee for the superintendent's contract evaluation and get a subcommittee created for that so they could start working together and putting all this together. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion was made by Mr. Gomes, and there was a tie. I'm going to give it to Mr. Vega. Show of hands. Carries unanimous, meaning adjourn. Thank you. Time is six.